Good evening. My name is Vince Knob, President of Speedway Town Council. Today is September 11th, 2023. It's 7:02 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First off, please silence all your cell phones in the audience. And if you, everybody would please stand on a moment of silence for those who have perished on 9/11 22 years ago. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. These minutes have been previously distributed to council. If there's no corrections or changes, we will, they will be approved as submitted. Hearing no changes, they're approved. Next item is the approval of a memorandum of a joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council and the Speedway Redevelopment Commission on September 5th, 2023.
Need a motion?
They need a motion.
Move that we approve the memorandum as presented by the council president.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the approval signify by saying aye.
Can I ask?
Aye. All is approved, 5-0.
Can I ask a question after the vote? That I didn't vote on? Is this the memo that Phillip sent, correct?
It is.
Okay, because I don't see it in our packet. It's just why I ask. So I will vote no, so you can count them 4 to 1.
4-1. Okay. Next item is a special event request for a fall on Main Street. And I think Cheryl, you're handling that?
Good evening, council. So last year we did the holiday lights on Main and everyone seemed excited. So this year I wanted to create more work for myself. And I thought we would try a contest for scarecrow building contests between all the businesses. Now, it's going to be, I want to open it up to all businesses in Speedway, not just Main Street. The plan is for each business to get involved and build either a single scarecrow or a display of some sort on their own, be creative, make it family friendly. They can market, use it as a marketing tool for their businesses and promote themselves. Use it as a team building activity for their staff and their employees. And then we're going to make it as easy as possible. If they want to participate, they'll simply go online. I'll send them an online link. They'll register. Let me know. The first 20 businesses who say we want to participate, we're going to give them a free bale of straw to use as a foundation for their scarecrow. We have, we're going to give them a week to set it up. It'll be displayed October 1 through the 30th. We'll use like a QR code that folks can easily vote on their favorite scarecrow right as they're, as they're looking at them. And then we'll announce the winners, the October 31st. I have discussed it with Grant and he has approved it. We've discussed it with the Speedway Streets Department. With any messes, potential messes, anything like that, they're okay with it. I did ask the Chamber of Commerce if they would partner with us since it's really supporting the businesses and, and they're very key in that. And they were excited to do so for the promoting and the cost share that might be involved. I've talked to Mike Ray with Famous Tomato and he's going to work with us on the bales of straw. And that's about it, I think. Any questions?
Oh, that's great.
Okay, yeah, I was, yeah.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve the special event request presented by Cheryl Seadman.
Let me have a second.
Stack it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Cheryl? Go for it.
All right. Thank you. We'll see how it goes.
Okay, next item was approval of a work order for American Structure Point for Eagle Creek sanitary siphon emergency repair. And we're still waiting for numbers to come in, so we're going to go ahead and pass on that right now. We'll go to item number six. Ordinance 1378, ordinance to add a new chapter to Title VI of the Speedway Municipal Code concerning density, space, use, and location requirements for dwellings in the town of Speedway. Bob, would you like to inform the council on that?
Absolutely. This is again, second reading of the ordinance. It passed on first reading at your last meeting. The title of the ordinance, it is adding a new chapter to the Speedway Municipal Code concerning density, space, use, and location requirements for dwellings in the town of Speedway. This is an ordinance that we've been working on for quite a period of time. It is based upon building code, both the state and United States Building Code. The entire intent of the ordinance is to promote and protect the health and safety of residents within the town. So it, it talks about the minimum numbers of square feet for a bedroom, that each bedroom must have an exterior exit window or some other thing of that sort. The total number of people permitted in a particular dwelling unit, whether it be a house or an apartment. So again, we've spent a lot of time on this, compared it with other ordinances throughout the state that are similar in nature and is largely based upon building code. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1378 as explained to Aspire Town Attorney.
Second?
Got a motion and a second, so I'll open up for questioning. Any questions? Bob, concerning the ordinance?
No question, just a statement. We, we worked on this for many, many months and I appreciate the hard work that, that both homeowners in, in town as well as staff and council and so on have put into this. But I'll vote support.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All is in favor of ordinance 1378. Second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next item is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Phillip?
Thank you. I have both for you tonight. I'm asking for one utility adjustment that covers the date range of August 25th to September 7th. And then for the same date period, I'm asking for claims totaling
Mr. President, would we approve the claims and adjustments as presented to us by Clerk Treasor?
Second?
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Go ahead and open up. Any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All is in favor of the claims and utilities as presented by Town Clerk Treasor. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. We're along. A report from our department, Superos, is there? Cheryl, you're up. They moved, they moved around, so we, we don't know.
Thursday on the 14th, it'll be 6 to 8 o'clock. The sponsor for that is IMS and IMSA. It will be located on Main Street from 14th Street to 16th Streets, along with the SRC-owned parking lot next to Barbecue and Bourbon. Main Street from 14th to 16th and the parking lot will be closed to traffic and parking beginning at 1:00 PM. Some of the elements of the event, there'll be 30-plus IMSA cards on display, pit stop demos, fan engagement, autograph sessions with, they're anticipating over 50 drivers, DJ music, and then a beer garden. They're hoping around 1,000 guests will be arriving for this. On Thursday, September 21st, is Run 317. That will be held from 7 to 9. That is being sponsored by Vision Event Management, along with the Speedway Lions Club. Setup for that will begin at 12:00 PM with no parking restrict, no parking restrictions at, beginning at 12:00 on Main Street from 14th to Gilman. The area, that area will be used for a temporary setup until the streets are completely closed at 3:00. Though they're anticipating 1,500 participants for the run. And we are asking the businesses to please, please consider being open during and after the event. Last year, they had a lot of folks stick around and they were having troubles finding a place to get a drink or something to eat. So if, yeah, if the businesses can stay open or are available to do that, that would be great.
Cheryl, I might make a comment on that one.
Sure.
Being a Lions Club member, I know that Lions Club offered 100 volunteers and some of those are not Lions Club members. But so for the public, anybody who wants to help volunteer on that, to be a course marshal or some other type of volunteer would be appreciated. The, the group, because the Lions Club helps facilitate this, the group writes a check back to the Lions Club for a significant amount of money. It's like 2,000 or 2,500 dollars.
Okay, okay. And to do that, you can, you could either search Run 317 on the website or you can go to the town page and we have links to it as well.
Thank you.
Lions Club, I think also on their Facebook page does. USAC Racing is having an Oktoberfest on Wednesday, October 4th. From 6 to 8:00 PM, USAC Racing will be sponsoring that. The event location will be 14th and to 16th Streets on Main, along with the SRC parking lot next to Barbecue and Bourbon. Main Street from 14th to 16th will be closed to traffic and parking beginning at 4:00 PM. Items there will be car display, fan engagement opportunities, and DJ music. USAC Racing is encouraging the attendees and the participants to visit the Main Street restaurants and bars. There will be no food trucks on site for that. On September 24th, kind of going back a little bit again, on, this is on a Sunday, starting at 4:00, there is the Speedway Hometown Parade. It consists, it's being, the sponsor for that is actually a group of Speedway parents who've come together to form a, a planning committee for that. The event location, the parade will be staged at IMS at Lot 9. We'll go, we'll travel over 21st Street, up Wynton Street, ending at the high school. The vision for the parade, I'm reading this from them, the committee, vision for the parade is that it will become an annual event and grow a little bit more each year. It's a way to host, it's a host, it's a way to host the, and celebrate the hometown feeling while bringing the community together. And it's just a fun experience for the family. As of today, there are 54 groups participating in the parade with over 800 participants. That's quite a few for a first year. Yeah, yeah. Some of those groups are businesses, several of the Speedway Clubs and Teams, Speedway Fire Truck and Police Cars, I believe, will be there. And then IMS and IMS Museum will have race car and four pace cars. So there's more information on the website that will get, will get you what you need to know on that along, along with a picture of the route. Let's see. I have a couple more events, just, just quickly. Taste of Speedway is a chamber event. That's on October 5th. The holiday lights will go up on Main Street, tentatively, November 10th or 11th. And that is about it. We've actually released several news pieces lately. So if folks want to go out to the town website and look at those, there's some really good information. There's a midtown, your mid-year report from State of the Town that gives a, a long list of all the accomplishments the, the town and the departments have, have done through mid-year. We'll build upon that at the year-end State of the Town. Speedway Home Helpers is back, so there's information on how to either volunteer or to be considered for a project on that. And that is all I have, unless you have questions.
No, any questions for Cheryl? I want to thank you for letting the public know. I think Home Helpers is a, would definitely be a great asset to the town, especially those individuals that are challenged of taking care of their home.
Yes.
Talking about raking leaves and outside activities like that for older people and so.
Yeah, they actually just rolled it out and I think we've gotten at least, at least through the office here, we've gotten, I think, two applications so far. And it was just released thinking the end of last week, so.
Applications for service or?
For service, yes. Yeah.
Right. So how are we finding people in need?
They are, they, meaning Home Helpers, which is part of the Speedway Housing Advisory Committee. Again, they're doing it on the digital platform. I don't know how else they're planning to do it. Through the town, I've shared it on, through residents' emails, along with the business email that I send out, and then our Facebook page and our website, so.
Maybe Brocky.
I suggest, yes, I, so I gave, I did suggest to Anthony Remian to contact Brock for possibly an ad there. See if that would, would do anything. Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we reach out as much as we possibly can. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Police Chief?
I don't have an agenda, so I'm relying completely on you tonight.
You're good.
Okay, first and foremost, give you an update on our, our current staffing. On August the 18th, Officer Cartapell did graduate from the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. So he's completed his FTO training before he went. So he is ready to go and been assigned to a shift and, and he's out working again. So David Craig, Officer David Craig, he is in the very last phase of his FTO training. So here within probably the next week, he should be assigned to a permanent shift and, and will begin serving that shift. And Officer Dan Stevens, as you know, he is still deployed as an Army reservist. So he's due for his end of that deployment at the end of October. So we should be getting him back. So. And we anticipate in 2024, two officers retiring in 2024. So we're going to go ahead and begin our pre-applications here pretty soon in the fall, just to be ready for that and get that process started. So I will give you some of our statistics through the end of August. This is the completion of August. So far, we've responded to 18,359 calls for service. Officers have made 690 arrests, issued 4,822 traffic citations, 731 traffic warnings, and investigated 469 crashes. So, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief? So where does that put us in manpower-wise, just to let the public know?
Right.
So we're going to be up three, but then we're going to be losing.
We are fully staffed right now. As soon as Officer Stevens gets back, he'll begin his FTO training. And he does have the academy, so we do not lose him to the academy. So he was one of our lateral entries. So right now, we are fully staffed. And we anticipate one of the officers retiring in April and the other, I believe, in August of next year. So we should be fully staffed for at least two or three months. So.
Hey, that's at least a start.
Yes.
Another thing I wanted to bring up was the accident in the roundabout.
Yes.
You can just see the debris of.
That was not us. That was IMPD chasing someone into town.
So I, that was my understanding that they, they called off their chase is within Marion County. Or is, or do they let, they, they can chase in Speedway?
It just depends on what the offense is. And all three of the juvenile, the car contained three juveniles and they were all apprehended. So, but yes, that damage was not caused by the Speedway Police Department.
Okay.
Wasn't caused by IMPD either, but it, it was generated by IMPD. So.
What was the, what was the offense that they were?
I believe it was a stolen vehicle. So, but they, that was 1:45 this morning. And needless to say, I hope I did not wake any of you up, but it woke me up. So figured I'd pass it on in an email to you.
No, I'm glad you did, you know, because I got a couple of calls in relationship to that.
I think it did some destruction to one of the IMS fences there. So.
Roger's not going to be happy.
No, he's not. But we did, they did catch him though.
Well, that's good. Yeah.
One, your crash numbers, seem like they're high?
You know, last year, we were about 600 for the year.
Okay.
So in comparison, just depends on how many we have. So I think a lot of that's generated from the fact that I think our, our traffic offenses and some of the things we have going on in town are a reflection on, I don't know how to say this in a proper way. I think there may not be a lot of enforcement going on other places. And I think we see that as a direct result of a lack of enforcement from other police agencies.
How do these numbers compare to pre-COVID?
That I'd have to research. We generally, in a given year, are between about 6, 7,000 tickets a year. So, and COVID, there weren't a lot of people on the streets. So our tickets really took a drop because there just weren't any citations to be issued. People were not moving around. But most generally, we're probably between 6, 7,000. Some years, we've gotten up to 8,000 tickets a year. So. We're out there trying to enforce it, but it, it. Unfortunately, even with almost 5,000 tickets issued, we can all still see that there's still enforcement to be done. So, but.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Can we get the fire chief? Bob Fishburne?
Well, we actually were fully staffed right up till September the 1st. And we had one of our firefighters apply for and receive disability after 21 years of service. And I'll share more of that when I'm able to. And then Chief, Battalion Chief Mike Chaney will be retiring Wednesday, the 13th. And Counselor Lindsay is going to help me with a proclamation at the first meeting in October. Mike's not in town for the second meeting and he, he's got the date for the first meeting in October. We'll honor him. We're doing a light open house for him. And then a celebration in October that we're planning with his wife. So. We will be fully staffed, though, on the 19th of September because we have two laterals from a list that we already had. So communicating with Phillip's office on all of that to get that taken care of. So, you know, police and fire will be fully staffed here for. We, we fully expect retirement in March, but sometimes people work past that date. So we, our list will be certified well past the date that we would need someone. And that list is intact from the merit board. So staffing's always an issue, but we're kind of getting through it. So. I, I do want to say a thank you to Zach DeBru, who's with the Water Department. Zach just does a great job communicating with police and fire and the street department. Rob will tell you, he does a great job of letting us know when a hydrant's down, when it's being replaced, when it's installed, all of those things. And I think sometimes those things go unnoticed. But those emails and then his direct communication with dispatch and command really helps our guys know that if they pull up to a hydrant, they're going to have water and not, you know, be left there, wait, looking for another hydrant 500 feet away. Appreciate Counselor Lindsay's help on the proclamation. I know that's been something you've always taken pride in and, and we'll have to find somebody else to do that next year. So. Our runs, our run load was 312 for the month of August. And 72% of that was EMS, so 243 of those runs were EMS. We had, did have a little bump up in fire runs, everything from food on the stove to other incidents. So that was 37, 12%. PIs and other accidents on the road was 4% of our run load. And then false alarms and disregards was about 7% of our run load. So like giving you those stats. You know, Mike, Battalion Chief Chaney's been with the town for 30 years. Served on Task Force One. He's been our PIO. He's been our inspector. He's done a variety of things and I'll bring some of those things to light in October. But we lose a lot of institutional knowledge when Mike leaves us. And we certainly want to thank him for his service. We'll do that fully with his family here and a lot of our guys here in October. But I do want to recognize him and thank him for his service. So. That's all I have. If you guys have any questions.
Well, speaking, speaking of Task Force One, do you have anybody deployed right now?
No, we had, we had one deployed to Hawaii for search and rescue. Thad Ferguson is one of our privates who's on Task Force. We have three guys who are deployable with the Task Force. Chief Chaney, Private Chris Jenkins, and then Private Thad Ferguson. Jenkins and Ferguson are search and rescue. Chris Jenkins is also a planner, so sometimes he goes to those sites to be the planner. Chief Chaney is logistics. And Thad was in Hawaii and really saw some, if you saw things on the news, he was seeing it firsthand, you know? It really looked like a, a bomb went off, just because of the way it burned. And the, you know, the soil there is so much different, so you get reflective heat and all of those sorts of things. It looked like a military, you know, deployment type thing. So it's not the way you want to go see Hawaii.
Yeah, for sure.
But we thank them for their service and, and just so the townspeople know, whenever we have an individual that is deployed with the Task Force, the town recuperates every penny of the money that is spent to support them here. When we backfill their position, FEMA reimburses us for all of that, which is, you know, the way it should be. But it's not something that the town takes a hit on. So. Okay?
Great. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, this Saturday, Relay for Life is having their annual event at Leonard Park. So if anyone wants something fun to do on Saturday, go out and support their efforts. I believe it's from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It's a 14-hour event this Saturday at Leonard Park. At the end of the month, on September 28th, as a Thursday, is our Community Day. So we're excited about that. A lot of the departments, it's kind of our version of National Night Out with the Police Department supplying and offering hot dogs to the community for free. Department supplying and offering hot dogs to the community for free. The Fire Department's going to be, I believe, passing out water again this year, and we have a lot of the departments that are going to be participating. We're going to have the Touch a Truck event again, where Town Equipment and Trucks will be out there for the kids to get up and see this equipment up close. And this year, we're excited, the Speedway Public Library is funding a Foam Truck Foam Event, F-O-A-M, as in bubbles, so the kids can come out, and they've got this, like, cannon thing, they shoot these bubbles out, so it should be a fun event for the kids to play in at Community Day. That event is five to seven p.m. at Leonard Park. On October twenty-eighth, we've got our annual trunk-or-treat that is scheduled at the high school parking lot, as has been done the last couple of years. So any past participants, if you're interested, you'll be getting an email from me probably within the next twenty-four hours. Any new participants interested in participating, please email me at tsmith@speedwayin.gov. We do the trunk-or-treat in the park, teachers' parking lot area of the high school, and we've been, last year, we saw close to eight hundred people come through. I think the year before that, it was a little over eight hundred. December sixth, mark your calendars for Light the Night on Main Street, so we're looking forward to that. Right now, our basketball league for boys and girls, grades three through sixth, is open for registration. Information should be coming home to the schools probably this week, and you can go online to find out more information about that. And then September, we do not have a Parks Board meeting scheduled for September. I am actually going to be out of the office, beginning this Wednesday, for two to four weeks, so we will not have a Parks Board meeting in September, and that's all I have.
Do we have any questions for Tammy? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Next up, Rob Woodnight.
Good evening, Council. We'll start off with sanitation plan. They treated a hundred and twelve million gallons of water in August. They've been very busy doing preventative maintenance, grounds, keeping, and they have a new water line put into the press building because the water pressure was low, so they installed a new water line to get the pressure back to where it needed to be. Water Department treated seventy-two million gallons of water, and they've been doing a lot of plant maintenance on properties, as far as tanks, getting all the old paint off, pressure washing, getting them ready to paint again. They're going to be getting quote for new fence around the intake on the levee from all the vandalism and everything that we're getting over there, and so, and then, and then as far as the Street Department goes, it's kind of business as usual, yard waste, and we're doing B and O Trail with the brush cutter this week. Last week, we did Dry Run Creek, got it cut back again. We do that twice a year, so, pretty much business as usual. That's all we have.
Any questions for Rob?
Busy summer, Rob. Thanks for what you and your team do.
Yeah. It's a busy all year round, just goes from one mode to the other.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
As part of that, Rob, we've talked about this before, but four sixty-five, you guys do a great job out there. I know part of that's my fault, but the.
It sells the Town very well, I believe, so.
They can charge you for it.
Yeah. We'll save the bill for that moment, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It looks very nice out there.
Thank you.
You can tell you're coming in town, it's much appreciated.
Well, we've got a good staff.
You do.
It's all team effort, I mean.
Yeah.
I just get to hold the reins, you know, they just do a good job, people with the right attitude doing the right work.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate, you can tell when they come through with grass cutting, they're picking up the trash and.
Right.
And doing it the right way, you know, and it makes a big appearance, and especially then we'll have the new sign that you have to.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's going to be a little different there, but hopefully it's not a target like some things in the roundabout a bit.
Yeah, well, yeah. You might have to put, you know, some type of barricade in front.
But yeah, no, they do a great job, and it's all year long, and it's not just for May.
So in front of Denny's, is that all going to be shrubs?
That's all landscape there, yep.
And so it's not a lot of maintenance on your.
Right, it's going to be more of, our landscaping contractor will be taking care of that. That will also be all irrigated, and it's more like an aerial view. You'll kind of, on the ground, it kind of, like, why are we doing this or that, but it's kind of making an arc all the way across the whole intersection to the sign, so that's what you're seeing.
So it might have taken a couple of years to grow out.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think it's going to be a great entranceway for the Town, you know? So.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Rob.
So our Town Manager, Grant Plainhens, is not able to make it tonight. He had a death in his family, and he lost a brother, and so he comes home from a really large family, he's down in Columbus, and I know that the Council and the people of Speedway, he's in our prayers and thoughts. It's very difficult to, I'm sure, lose a brother, and especially from a large family like that, but he isn't, and he even came into work today, he just had an engagement tonight that he wouldn't be here, but I really appreciate the work that he's doing, and we'll go from there. Next up, report from Council members. Eileen Fisher.
So I just wanted to say thoughts and prayers with Grant, with the loss of his brother, but I'd also like to give a shout-out to Gina Grove. She is the individual that has really pushed the new community parade that will be taking place at the end of this month, along with a few other gals there, but to hear the numbers that she's gotten signed up for this and the money that she's raised, it is going to be, you know, something to really see, so I hope there are a lot of people that will go out to the streets there that the parade will be running on and really support them for the first year.
Absolutely. Counselor David Lindsey.
I just have one thing. When I make a mistake, I'll admit it. The memorandum was in my packet, but in the President's haste to be efficient and move the meeting along, I didn't get a chance to get to it, so I don't know if my vote can reflect, I approve that, but again, that was my mistake, completely missed it, so that's all I have.
No, thank you.
So I was wrong tonight.
Wow.
That's first for everything.
Yeah.
That's a lifetime.
Yeah.
Go ahead, then, Counselor Gary Rix.
I agree wholeheartedly with Eileen on the points she made. Gina's done a nice job, and I'm excited about that parade. We had a parade for a few years, and this parade's going to be north of Crawfords Hill Road, and there's not, sometimes there's folks that say, hey, we'd like to have some events north of Crawfords Hill Road, so this is a great opportunity for that to happen, so I'm excited for that. It's nine eleven, and we had a moment of silence, and, you know, everybody was somewhere twenty-two years ago, if you're alive, and I was near New York, and it was, it was amazing moment in our country's history, but I, I think about women and men who volunteered, first of all, that were on scene, that lost their lives. It was nearly three thousand people that day alone, but I also think about people who joined the Armed Forces, and we lost one here in Speedway, John Rankle, June seventh of two thousand and ten, and he specifically joined the Marine Corps. He was a freshman in high school when he just made that decision, and a few years later went in, and there were three of their classmates that he had that went with, also enlisted, and that's not the only story. There's unfortunately thousands of women and men that did the same thing, they volunteered to go there and they lost their lives, so. Those losses went way beyond nine eleven, and they continue today with troops and people that come back with, with memories of those very difficult times. There's PTSD issues, and so just, nine eleven doesn't just, shouldn't be just remembered today, the same as Pearl Harbor shouldn't have been remembered for just the day in December, but I just want to make a point of emphasis about how important that day was for our country.
Thank you. Vice President Gary Pedago.
Well, I'm just going to, excuse me, I'm going to echo the comments made by Counselor Fisher and Counselor Rix regarding the parade and nine eleven. The only thing I will add is if you're physically able, donate, 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 blood, double red cells, platelets, still an ongoing shortage here in central Indiana. That's all I have.
Absolutely, thank you. Report from the President, I just think that, I think from all the number of events that we're holding in this Town and activities, we were just there on Jazz Fest, so we basically set the stage up and got it going, and, and I think it is the variety of activity in our Town that is a result of, of the, everybody in the Town pulling together, and we can be very proud of our Police Department, our Fire Department, and all the members of our staff, the work and hours that they put in. I mean, it's barely seen by the public, but there's so much work going on twenty-four seven that they don't see, they just see the reflections of that, but it really makes me proud to be a citizen of the Town of Speedway and the work that is done here on a daily basis. So I just want to thank especially staff and all the Town members that pulled us, pulled together to make sure this Town is operating in an efficient manner. That's all I have tonight. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.